So when it comes out?
Yes.
Yes.
I will.
It's.
I will speak on that.
Okay.
Right.
Yes, yeah. You're definitely.
And since I had the joy of attending all the dinner, I thought I was.
I can completely thoroughly appreciate.
Very good.
Did we ever get to one of them?
No.
My next comment is to be nothing other than a bit of a joke.
Nice, yes. But it literally was just like from.
For me.
Oh. And we were sitting in a pot, so it's.
How's he go to the bar?
You know what? It's nice to have that.
I have hands on. Yeah. But that's.
Compared to.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Webster.
I have a couple of things, but I'm going to surprise you. I did? Surprise you. I'd like to know more. Good ones or bad?
Okay.
Well, now I think you're making it up.
Okay. I don't know who. Who likes the big guy?
Mike Martin.
Jack Martin. Good evening. It is six o'clock, so I will go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Noblesville Common Council for Tuesday, October 7th. Please rise. Mr. Schwartz, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Ms. Leece, will you call the roll?
Mr. Boyce. Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Elliott.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Thurston.
Present.
Ms. Watts.
Present.
Madam President, you have a form.
Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the September 23rd, 2025 meeting.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from September 23rd, 2025. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Approval of the agenda.
Moved, approved, second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present? I do have one card. Mr. Webster, do you want to speak now, or do you want to speak when the item comes before the council? Okay, all right, great. We will now move on to Mayor Johnson and your comments.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, great to be with you tonight. Thank you for being here as we take on a hearty task tonight of the budget conversation. I want to just address, first of all, the budget. I'm going to let the fiscal leaders, when the time comes up for that topic, to address you, but I just want to start by saying thank you. You all know better than anybody that this, the budget process in Noblesville is not a short one. It's not an easy one. It usually starts in mid-springtime with budget projections. There are conversations that happen a lot of one-on-one between council members and their liaison to better understand departments and their needs. I just appreciate the time that you take away from doing that. I don't think every community does that. I think it's important for our council to understand and our department heads to have a relationship with you, to talk through needs and wants and those type of things. So thank you for the time that you devote to dive into that. Obviously, this year's budget process is a little bit unique based on the leadership of the State House and where they wanted to go under some constraints under SEA-1, which we've talked with at nauseam tonight. The budget you see in front of you is a budget that is actually $8 million less than the 2025 budget, which may, I'm not sure how that strikes certain people. I can tell you, in one of the fastest-growing cities in the Midwest, that's very difficult. And we're going to see some of that difficulty in 2026. Whether you're an employee here, whether you're a citizen of Noblesville, you'll see a difference in a community that has a roughly $120 million budget. An $8 million reduction will be seen and felt. But like everything, we love challenges. We love, we view them as opportunities, which takes most of my staff off when I say that, but it is an opportunity, and we're going to continue to work with it. As you know, we've taken a look at our 10-year capital improvement plan that we set out many, several years ago, and what we will do is defer and adjust some of the timelines on that. I know we've discussed different projects such as, you know, West Side Dog Park, which we've talked about for years, will be deferred. Salt Barn, Megan loves a good Salt Barn, will defer that as well. Several trail projects, infrastructure projects will have to be deferred as we manage through these new fiscal constraints. But, and as you know, that we've put a freeze in place here at City Hall of any new positions that were not already budgeted for going forward, as well as we let our staff members know, we have roughly about four, between 480 and 500 members of our staff, full and part-time here, that work for the city of Noblesville that will see no raises in 2026, which I know we don't take that decision lightly. I know you all have consulted with us on that, and I appreciate all that you've done to come alongside us in that discussion. And I know that's a difficult one, but it's one that we'll have to make going forward. We're going to continue to invest in major capital expenditures, major infrastructure projects, economic development projects that will grow our local economy and our city's ability to continue to fund the operations. You'll know the budget that you have in front of you, about 54% is devoted to public safety. I always believe if you want to know what our priorities are, look where we're spending our funds. I think as business owners or as families, that's true across the board. And 54% to public safety makes a lot of sense for our community. It takes a lot to make sure that we maintain our 12th safest suburb recognition in the United States. So that is up from about 52% last year. I remember several years ago when we hit that 50% threshold, so we're continuing to make those investments. As you know, as city leaders, any debt that the city incurs is different than our friends on the federal level. They have, Washington has all sorts of problems, most of which being operational debt. We, the debt that we have in our community is really based on two factors. One, infrastructure, so we bond for infrastructure projects to help grow our city and the economy within it, and also economic development bonds. But I will say, a majority of our economic development bonds are actually developer-backed, so that's not even municipal. But it does show up on our balance sheet, but those are actually backed by development bonds going forward. So we'll continue to invest in projects like that, that help grow our economy and allow us more resources. So again, just wanted to kind of outline high level. Those are similar comments that I made two weeks ago as you considered this budget going forward. So thank you again for your time and your consideration, and I'll pass it off in a little bit to Jeff Spalding as he walks you through the budget. The second item I would like to address is an item that I addressed in the springtime, and that was some conversation around occupancy rates in our downtown mixed-use developments. You'll recall in the spring, we were kind of going through a bunch of numbers and a bunch of data. Oftentimes, you hear different things pop up on social media or emails about questions, which I certainly respect, but I wanted to come back to you six months later with kind of an updated numbers for our downtown mixed-use developments that you're seeing. So just to kind of go over with you, Levenson, which was our first here, just next door to us here, is at 98% occupancy. Nexus, you'll recall, that is the old Marsh site on the west end of downtown. That is at a 91% occupancy rate. Our friends, the Lofts on 10th, just north of here, is at 100% occupancy. Federal Hill Commons, which again is now home to Baccato and Indy Coffee Roasters as well, is now at a 93% occupancy rate, which is a very solid number. And then our friends at East Bank, which is our newest one, came online earlier this year. They are now up to a 42% occupancy rate. So again, I think all very solid numbers. In fact, I would say four of those five are fully occupied. They need to have some room for new people to move in and out of. So, and again, East Bank is our newest. There's no concern. J.C. Hart is the owner of that. They're the ones who backed the development bonds on that project. They feel very good moving forward that there'll be, I'm sure, six months from now, but in that 90 percentile range that we're here today. But I think it's important for you all to have that data for you. I can send you an email separately too with those numbers, just so you have them as you're talking to constituents going into the holiday shopping season. And hopefully, our downtown businesses will have a very robust holiday shopping center, season because of all those new residents living, working, playing, and staying in our downtown. So with that, those were the two items I wanted to go over with you tonight. Happy to answer any questions, but most importantly, I will just end by saying too how much I appreciate the cooperation our city council has with the administration. I think there's been some examples recently that that's not always the case in every community, and I just thank you for, from the bottom of my heart, for the time that you give to our administration, the conversation, the constructive conversation and dialogue back and forth. It is genuinely appreciated and noted.
Thank you. Any questions or comments of the mayor?
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to council committee reports and the Economic Development Committee. Mr. Schwartz?
Yes, Madam President. The Economic Development Council Committee met Wednesday, September 10th. Present were myself, Megan Wiles, Mike Davis, and Mark Boyce, attended electronically. I believe the Economic Development Department gave a presentation about the gateway, downtown east and west gateways that were spoken about in the meeting, so I won't go too much into that as they presented last meeting. It was, next discussed was the site visits that the department does. Ms. Robinson stated they visited several existing businesses in the third quarter. She stated the goal was to strengthen connections and have 25 site visits in 2025. She stated 18 site visits had been completed, and she stated 10 businesses had been referred to workforce and training partners. She stated staff supported five companies with expansion planning. There were seven remaining visits planned for 2025. There was an update on the arena. Ms. Robinson reviewed statistics for the arena at Innovation Mile. She stated the arena was booked through 2029. That was impressive. She stated the first month of operations saw nearly $800,000 in projected revenue and approximately 63,000 visitors to Noblesville. She stated additional 1 million in prospective events was booked. She stated the venue was hosting a broad range of events, and the arena was a meeting a critical market needed. She stated 26 events had been confirmed, not including the Boom Games. There was a brief discussion on upcoming events for the remainder of 2025. Ms. Reed stated there were multiple, multi-year deals in place. Mr. Murray stated his department had been contacting businesses, business executives to give VIP tours. She stated staff hosted an Israeli tech company. There was a discussion regarding sponsorships. Next was department outlook. Mr. Haberman reviewed the department's five-year strategic plan. He stated this was the fifth year of the plan, so they would be updating it. He said they would reexamine target industries and make sure they were meeting the needs of the community. Marketing and attraction, website and social media update. Ms. Davis reviewed website growth, which was strong. She stated Blue Sky was updating the new brand, "All About You." She stated visitors were staying longer on the website, and there was a brief discussion on how Blue Sky tracks the information. Ms. Davis stated there was a newsletter which included a list of properties. She stated interaction with social media sites were up over the last 90 days. She stated Blue Sky assisted with tracking online engagement. She stated they had custom-printed material with the new tagline. The committee asked to sign up for the department's newsletter. Staff agreed that we would get those emails. Sponsorship. It was stated the city of Noblesville would sponsor Powering Champions Night on September. That's passed. Excuse me. Let's see. There was some discussion. The Economic Development uses a company called Top Shot. It is the company that does all the drone footage of construction projects for use on the website. She stated Top Shot produced time-lapse film of current projects. She played a sample of the time-lapse video, and she stated Top Shot helped promote Noblesville's current events. And that was pretty much it.
Great, wonderful. Any questions on Mr. Schwartz? Seeing none, we will move on to the Roads Committee and Mr. Thurston.
Thank you, Madam President. The Roads Committee met on Friday, October 3rd. Mark Boyce, myself, Pete Schwartz were present. Megan attended electronically. Talked about a lot of the ongoing road construction projects, as most of us are aware of around here. I'm going to highlight a couple. Bear with me, I don't have my glasses, so if I say something wrong, somebody correct me. Couple of the big ones. Pleasant Street, 19th Street, around where the post office is, closed for 38 days. Westbound lanes are anticipated to open on October 11th, and then it's pretty likely that single lanes of traffic will be open to allow for final work outside that roadway, so they can continue to do that. On Pleasant Street, Phase 3, as most of you are probably aware, the intersection at 32 and Hay opened on September 26th. I'm sure everybody's been through that. It's great. Lots of positive feedback, and I continue to get, a lot of people were surprised at how fast that it was able to get completed. Improvements are planned for the intersection of State Road 37 and Pleasant Street continuing, and we'll continue to work through that project. The rest of it is from Pleasant, from 32 going the other way, late, mid to late November. Park Link Pass, formerly known as the Forest Park to Federal Hill Trail, is open around there. If you haven't been by, the crosswalks on Logan Street have been completed. They're decorative crosswalks. They look great. If you haven't seen them, encourage you to go by and take a look. Allows a safer way for folks to cross Logan Street right there. And the last one, just an update, State Road 38 and Hinkle Road/Moon Town was closed on September 29th. That will be a 45-day closure, so if you're going that way, just be advised.
And that is an in-depth project.
That is an in-depth project.
Yes.
Do you happen to answer any other questions?
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will move on to the Finance Committee and Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. We met Thursday, October 2nd. Pete Schwartz, Aaron Smith, Tom Thurston, and myself. Jeff Spalding discussed the 2026 civil city maximum property tax rate, and he and Tom McDonald also discussed the 2026 civil city budget comparison of adopted versus introduced. We're going to hear about some of that this evening. That and the claims come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions on Mr. Davis? Finance Committee.
Madam President.
Mr. Thurston.
Make a motion to approve the claims as submitted. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve. The claims as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero. Thank you very much. Move on to previously discussed ordinances. Council to consider ordinance number 31-09-25, an ordinance establishing the 2026 budget as amended. Mr. Spalding.
Madam President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and controller, and plan to handle this discussion in partnership with Tom McDonald, and it's nicely separated into two parts, and I will first walk through. Good, that's the right way to do it. Bye. Here. Oh, let's see. It's not, it's electronic, not the cable. And I will first walk through the more technical aspects of this action tonight. So as those of you that have been on the council are aware and have become familiar with, the official action that you'll take tonight is dealing with this document, this ordinance, that is prepared and structured specifically around certain regulatory constraints that all municipalities operate within, and so we develop and pass a budget that addresses that, and then secondarily, within those constraints, we put together the actual budget that we will adhere to and manage to during the year, and those are different in some interesting but important ways. Just want to make sure that everybody understands those differences. So on this document, what you see are adopted budget numbers that pretty closely reflect the budget that we adhere to, but there are some slight differences. Again, from a technical standpoint, there are some aspects of the budget which represent inter-fund transfers, and when you report this to the DLGF, our regulatory entity, they record those inter-fund transfers as an expense from one fund and revenue to the other fund when, for us, there is no expense or revenue, so they actually. And I will first walk through the more technical aspects of this action tonight. So, as those of you that have been on the council are aware and have become familiar with, the official action that you'll take tonight is dealing with this document, this ordinance, that is prepared and structured specifically around certain regulatory constraints that all municipalities operate within. And so, we develop and pass a budget that addresses that. And then, secondarily, within those constraints, we put together the actual budget that we will adhere to and manage to during the year. And those are different in some interesting but important ways, just want to make sure that everybody understands those differences. So, on this document, what you see are adopted budget numbers that pretty closely reflect the budget that we adhere to, but there are some slight differences. Again, from a technical standpoint, there are some aspects of the budget which represent inter-fund transfers. And when you report this to the DLGF, our regulatory entity, they record those inter-fund transfers as an expense from one fund and revenue to the other fund, when for us, there is no expense or revenue. So, they actually show up and add to the totals for these funds that are reflected on this report. And as you can see, the bottom line total there for the funds that are on this report is 119 million, 119.2 million. But when you adjust for all those inter-fund transfers, the actual budget for those funds is 112.9 million. So again, just recognizing that if you were to look this stuff up in our internal budget system for those funds, you would see numbers that are different on this, that are on this report. The second thing is the adopted tax levy, and related to that, the adopted tax rate. And this ends up being kind of the most important and significant aspect of this document. These establish an upper limit for what the city can legally levy and the tax rate that it can set. And because of the way the state law is structured, we do, and every other community does this, they adopt amounts that are above what we plan to actually invoke or establish in that year. And there's another action on the council agenda tonight that we'll get to that in a little bit more detail. But the amounts that are reported on here, the adopted tax levy of 64, really 65 million, if you go into the actual budget that we will be adhering to, that amount is 56.2 million. And then, the adopted tax rate here is, you know, a dollar 14 cents in effect. And we anticipate that the actual tax rate will be 97 cents. And again, compared to last year, this is, we did the same thing. And on this document last year, that tax rate was shown as a dollar 28, and we actually ended up adopting a tax rate of a dollar 10. So, again, just walking you through all of the details, these are setting upper limits. The reason you set the upper limits now is there are still a few steps along the process where certain things could change, so you have to provide yourself the opportunity to make adjustments for those changes. And you don't want to, you know, overly constrain yourself by setting upper limits that are too low. But we will actually adhere to a budget that is lower levy, lower tax rate, and less than these appropriation numbers that are on here. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to take those, or I'll hand it off to Tom to give an update on what's changed from the introduced to the adopted budget.
Any questions from Mr. Spalding at this time? Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, I'm Tom McDonald, Deputy Financial Officer. I have a brief overview to give of the changes from the introduced to the adopted budget. Thank you. So, overall, the total changes from introduced to adopted is an increase of little over $28,000. And up here, you see just a summary of, there are five changes. One of them is net zero. First change on here is a $300,000 increase for police-fire compensation adjustments. This is to address increased retention pressures for sworn officers. And then, next one is a 300, little over $316,000 reduction in the fire department's budget. This reflects a change in how new SCBA equipment or respirator systems will be purchased. So, in the introduced budget, this purchase was intended to be financed over five years through the capital equipment lease program. And instead, we are going to bring forward a request for 2025 to use one-time cash reserves to make that purchase. So, while it'll be a bit of a higher increase upfront, it will save $150,000 in interest costs over the five-year terms if we had financed it that way. Next on the list is a $50,000 increase for police, for the police overtime budget. So, this, the department had already brought forward a request for $125,000. This increase brings it in line with current overtime trends and projected costs in 2026. And then, next on the list is a 5,000 reduction for the council financial advisory services. So, this contract in the budget will be reduced from 20,000 to 15,000. And then, lastly, is just a net zero. This is a technical fund shift within the Downtown Development Fund. It's to properly budget for the Embrace Downtown project. So, in addition to this, I just wanted to let you know that we also have provided some documents to you in your OneDrive, an updated presentation from last week, or two weeks ago. And then, also, our budget summary document, which provides more detail on the adopted budget, and it's a document we'll post online as well. Happen to answer any questions?
Any questions of Mr. McDonald?
How much interest is the, moving the SBCA respirators into one-time payment saves quite a bit of financing?
It does. Thank you. $150,000 over the course of the five-year.
Wow. Other questions? Comments?
Just one comment.
Yeah.
I appreciate, I know that it was in the last one, and I'm sure it's in the updated documents to the projects that we've had to defer because of SDA 1, I think. That's a question that I've received. I know that we have an $8 million hole that we have to fill. Part of that is deferring those projects that are important. So, I know this is the first year of an ongoing cost that we have to figure out how to operate within. But I have pointed out that people that have asked me that question to that document as well, so thank you for including that.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you very much. So, Mr. Webster, if you would like to come forward?
Sure.
If you will please state your name and address, and you have three minutes to speak. I'm going to set my timer and hopefully it works appropriately.
Hi. My name is Todd Webster. My address is 14947 Breymar Avenue East, Noblesville, 46062. I'm here as a private residence, private citizen, I should say. As I stated before, and I've had direct conversations with Mr. Thurston, very near and dear to my heart is way less taxes at all levels, local, federal, property, state, everything. I've watched for too many years, too much of my paycheck, my kids' paychecks, my wife's paychecks, go to government bloat, overspending, waste, everything. And I'm glad to see that the city is working to constrain things. However, I do still have some concerns when we look at how much debt has been added to it. And I've done a lot of research over the past several weeks trying to understand this new property tax bill, how it impacts us as a family, you know, and our bottom line, things like that. And when I look into some of the budgets for the city, and I look at things, you know, debt for the city that's been, that expire, or should not say expire, that comes to maturity in the next five years, and what is past that, as a city, we've added over $246 million in debt that's ongoing. So, when we look at, you know, $8 million a year in payments, I look at that as a private citizen of, that's $8 million as a city that has to be focused on. So, when things come up, like we need more police and fire equipment, which I'm all about, I love the fact that 52% of our budget as a city is going to that. I would love to see it go to that versus giving away tax abatements and tax incentives. And I've also done research looking at what tax abatements and incentives have given away to private industries. It's projected to exceed $100 million since 2020. Now, I don't fault the developers and businesses do that. Their job is to get the best deal. But I feel like we have a vibrant, growing city. Why are we giving tax dollars away that could be going back to the city? We're getting all kinds of press for USA Gymnastics moving here. How many tax dollars were given up that I pay in my paycheck, my wife, kids, you guys are all paying your paychecks? How many tax dollars were given up in whatever form to get them to move from Indianapolis to Noblesville? For Bastion, I mean, we already have the precedent, Westfield didn't play ball, so they moved to Noblesville. Well, what's going to happen in 10, 15 years when Noblesville says, well, we need to start paying your taxes? Are they going to go to Fisher's? Are they going to go to Carmel, someplace else? That's my concern as a private citizen, is that we just keep giving away things when, guess what? You can't control what the state does. State comes in with a new bill that all of a sudden, you have to drastically shrink. It's just like, me, as a private citizen, if we have a job change or a job loss, all of a sudden, we've got to circle the wagons and say, okay, where do we cut funding? That greatly concerns me when I look at it as an entity to do that. So, I know my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Do you want to respond?
Yeah, Madam President, members of the council, thanks, Mr. Webster, for taking time to be here tonight. Certainly welcome council comments and citizen comments at any point in time. I think it's important to note, on a few items, a tax abatement is not giving away dollars. Tax abatements are simply dollars that we would not have received had a project not come to a community. So again, no dollars being given away there. Anytime we do a project that you all vet and approve, we focus heavily on the return on investment of any of those investments. Bastion, you mentioned, was in Westfield. That was one-eighth of a corporate development in the United States. This is combining all eight of those to Noblesville, Indiana, so it really isn't a one-for-one. It's an actual complete relocation of their North American corporate headquarters. Yes, the taxes were abated. The taxes were not being generated to begin with. If not for that tax abatement, they would probably not be here in Noblesville. So certainly respect the comment. I think it's important to have context around that. USA Gymnastics was an incentive through TIF dollars, so already pre-existing TIF dollars within the fund, so no new taxes levied on individuals. As taxpayers, you will not be paying a future tax in order to bring USA Gymnastics here. Again, important context to have going forward. And then, the final note, yes, the debt, we do incur debt as a community. I think it's important to note, again, that is not operational debt. That is infrastructure debt, and that is economic development debt, a majority of which is backed by developer-backed bonds. Yes, it shows up on our balance sheet. It has to, but it's actually not backed by taxpayers. It's backed by private development. So, again, always welcome that feedback. Love the conversation. Important to have context around all these things. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to comment. I appreciate when we run those models, they typically, they typically take into account property taxes at a very conservative model. There are a lot of projects, in addition to you having induced incentives with beverage tax and other things that these businesses bring to the community, besides just to return on the proper tax debt.
Mr. Thurston?
Madam President, I have one more thing. I, too, when I got on council, it was one of the things I wanted to understand more, because I was sitting out there going, why are we giving all this stuff away? Because who wouldn't want to come here? The other thing that I think is important to understand, in addition to what the mayor explained, when somebody is working with our economic development group, and we're trying to attract them, it's not just what we're given, it's also what we're asking of them as well. And one of the things that we're asking them is not just come here and be a business in Noblesville, but be a part of Noblesville. So, there are some community requirements that we have laid out in those development agreements, as far as supporting or being involved, you know, service hours, volunteer hours, supporting local nonprofits, whatever it is. And again, I'll give kudos to our economic development partners. All of the stuff that we see, they see probably 20 times that before it gets vetted, before it gets to us. So, I truly believe that the projects that are coming to us, that you're reading about, that we're concerned upfront about what we're giving away, which, again, we're not giving away, but the value that I think they're bringing to the, I don't want to speak for everybody, but the value that I think what we're attracting to Noblesville right now is tenfold. I think everybody would love to have some of the stuff that we're attracting right now. So, again, kudos to our economic development partner. I think it's not giving away tax, you know, money. It's bringing stuff in that's looking a little different, and it's, the wording is a little different, but we're bringing strong community partners to Noblesville, creating jobs in Noblesville. And that's something that doesn't show up a lot of times on the balance sheet, but it shows up in the community.
To that point, I think, this number's dated, because I haven't asked the economic development team this lately, but a few years ago, they said that 90, I think it was around 90% of what comes into their office doesn't even make the light of day out to us. So, I was pretty impressed by that. They've got a pretty high standard for our community that I really appreciate that they hold to.
Other questions or comments?
Can I have one more thing?
No.
Please. So, I do want to say, as it relates to Mr. Webster, I wish everybody would do what he has done. I mean, he has reached out to me. We've had back-and-forth emails and dialogue, and he shows up and stresses his concern. I tell people, you're not going to agree with everything we're doing all the time, but I guarantee you, there's nine people up here, including the mayor and his office and staff, that we truly are moving forward with what we think is the best thing with Noblesville, for Noblesville, not just today, but long-term. And a lot of that is public safety, which, again, you said 52, it's 54% now. So, we do, I promise you, all of that stuff is taken into consideration, and I do thank you for the way that you have gone about just trying to gather more information. I appreciate that. Thank you. Now I'm done.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to amend ordinance number 31-09-25 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to amend ordinance 31-09-25 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight zero.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve ordinance number 31-09-25 as amended.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 31-09-25 as amended. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's?
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nay. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. We'll move on to council to consider ordinance number 32-09-25, a salary ordinance for appointed officials and employees of the city of Noblesville for 2025. Holly Ramon, good evening.
Good evening. Holly Ramon, Human Resources Director. As we stated at our last meeting, we discussed the bi-weekly salaries listed on the salary ordinance in front of you do not, does not include any type of across-the-board increase. So, zero across-the-board increase. And as outlined in your letter, we did have a request for a few changes, such as some title changes, a reclassification. We also removed some outdated titles, and we had some pay grade adjustments. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from Mrs. Ramon?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve ordinance number 32-09-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 32-09-25 as presented. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's?
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nay. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Council to Consider Ordinance Number 33-09-25, a salary ordinance for elected officials for 2026. Mrs. Ramon.
Again, as stated at our last meeting, the salaries listed on the ordinance do not include any type of an increase. The salaries listed on the 2026 ordinance are the same amounts listed as on the 2025 ordinance. There's been no other revisions made to this ordinance other than the year. It's been changed to 2026 and a new ordinance number. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions from Mrs. Ramon on this one?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve ordinance number 33-09-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 33-09-25 as presented. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's?
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nay. The ordinance is approved. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much. New ordinances for discussion, zoning matters. Council to consider ordinance, and I'm going to read these two together. Council to consider ordinance number 36-10-25 as ordinance for a change of zoning from R1 residential to R2, R3, R4, and R5 residential for property east of Promise Road between State Road 32 and East 181st Street, containing approximately 124 acres. And council to consider ordinance number 37-10-25, an ordinance for a change of zoning and adoption of a preliminary development plan and waivers. Ordinance to be R2-R3-R4-R5/PD for property east of Promise Road between State Road 32 and East 181st Street and containing approximately 124 acres.
We have introduced.
Second.
Ms. Stevens, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Before the council this evening is adoption of a change of zoning request from R1 to R2, 3, 4, and 5, and adoption of a planned development ordinance, a preliminary development plan for 124 acres north of and adjacent to State Road 32 and south of and adjacent to 181st Street, East Promise. Development would be called Parks at Crossroads and will consist of 44 total units of duplex dwellings, 82 townhomes, and 198 single-family detached dwellings. Color concept plan from the applicant's application is on the overhead. Project was introduced at the September 9 council meeting and has had preliminary tax review and ARB review and approval. And the project does come to you from the September 15 Plan Commission meeting with a favorable recommendation.
Questions or comments of staff?
Oh, this is better for staff or for the applicant? But if we can hear how it was initially introduced and the changes that have been made since then, just as a refresher, I think that'd be great. I really appreciate all that you guys have done to listen to the feedback.
If you'll please introduce yourself.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is John Dobishewitz. I'm a miscellaneous professional with the law firm Nelson and Frankenberger. We represent the applicant Boomerang Development. Kobe Thompson is here this evening, as well as representatives from the home builders, Lenar Home and David Weekly Homes. The proposal was first introduced to the council in May, and we received feedback at that time regarding the overall density of the request, as well as the building product. Modifications were made, and this item was reintroduced to the council at the September 7 meeting. Those changes included a reduction in the number of homes by approximately 35 homes, down to 324 total homes, as well as a significant reduction in the number of townhomes with an increase in the single-family detached dwellings and an introduction of multiple home product types. In addition to that, the open space areas were enhanced, both in area, as well as with the number of amenities that were redistributed across the site rather than just in one location. I think that encompasses the majority of the adjustments that were made and would be glad to answer any questions the council might have. In addition to that, we would respectfully request adoption consideration this evening, and we were made aware that there may be some questions or some concerns with regard to one of the items staff didn't mention, which is residential rental commitments that have been added. Would be open to that dialogue in advance of the council's action this evening. Thank you.
Questions or comments? Ms. Dobishewitz?
I just saw, so we saw this in ARB, and I appreciate the links that the, from the original plans that we saw. I appreciate what the two home builders have done to get this to be foresighted architecture and the quality of the product that's going to be in this. It's really outstanding.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, you're going to continue to discuss the agreement, the rental restrictions in spite of how we vote tonight? Is that a comment?
I wanted to find out from the council what the concern or comments were. To the extent that we could address those this evening, we'd be glad to. We're just not certain on exactly what the nature of that request is.
Mr. Dobishewitz, you did include an example of that rental agreement in the council packets.
It's under Tab 7 of the informational, rather. Tab 7 is the rezon ordinance.
Madam President, you know, I had discussion about this, just the way it's in there, I think is correct. I thought we had some discussions about a percentage of cap within this. I thought we were trying to limit rentals to 10%. That's what I would be asking for.
My understanding, just to add some context to the discussion, we've had eight clients with representation over the last 18 months. The language that you have in front of you this evening is identical to the past seven rezon request. There have been three other rezon requests in front of the council in the last residential rezones. The Gatewood PUD, which does not have single-family detached rental restrictions, only rental restrictions that apply to townhomes.
Correct.
The Morris Landing request, which I believe, and I can't become, don't hold me to this, but others have represented to me that there's only a restriction on townhomes there and not regarding single-family detached dwellings. And the other is the marketplace on 146th Street, and I'm unaware if there's any rental restrictions in that location. But we're following the lead of the last seven in the last 18 months since April 2024. So I just wanted to frame the discussion.
So it was our understanding that we had had that cap put in place, and it may be that that didn't happen, and so then that's our mistake that we didn't catch that. But wanting to be able to limit the number of homes and communities that can be considered potential rental properties, including and with maintaining these restrictions of the 12-month time period of when it might be available.
Satisfies the council with regard to the request and just having received the request this evening. This is the language that's in your packet today. The second paragraph, starting with renting and leasing, we would propose that we add to that that the number of dwellings that may be permitted to be leased shall be capped at 15% of the total number of dwellings. We'll make that adjustment. We'll have it signed and deliver it back to the clerk treasurer's office tomorrow morning. So I'm representing this evening that we would add that cap of 15% to the commitments that are in place. And just for the sake of typing it in and not writing it into the commitment document, we would have it rewritten and deliver it to Ms. Lee's in the morning. And we would ask for your consideration subject to that amended commitment.
I appreciate that. Just to give a little more background, one of the reasons why we've kind of gone down this road is because we've had, at least I have, and I know Darren has had some, we've had some meetings with some neighborhood HOAs where some of them are starting to get overloaded with, you know, some outside large agencies coming in. And it's really hard to get the HOA to change those rules because they have to have 80% or whatever it is show up. So what we were trying to do is make it a little bit easier, have some of that in there. They can go back and change it later if they want, but it's easier for us to get it in there at the beginning.
And be assured, the rezones that I've talked about that have been in place and the language that's included in here prevents the institutional investor. It has to be a resident. The resident moves in, they live there for 12 months, and then they're able to lease for 12 months to a new person. If a new buyer buys that, that new buyer has to be there 12 months before they, so it doesn't just say, hey, for one year, somebody's there, and then it's an open for business. It's always the 12-month clock starts again when somebody else buys it. So we believe, and it's my understanding that the staff lead, that this would deter from an institutional investor who, in essence, couldn't do it because they're not residing in the residence for 12 months.
And that 12-month cycle would be owner-occupied.
Correct. So we don't have, you know, if it's an LLC and they're renting, there's a problem. It's not permitted.
Correct.
And again, up to the HOA to police that.
Yes, sir.
You know, all this, like we discussed in the ARB meeting, we had a very long discussion. Thank you, Mr. Smith, for bringing it up and dragging us through it. It was about, you know, porches, and we want to create a stronger sense of community, and that's really what this is tailored towards, is outside LLCs or not creating a sense of community. That's so.
Understood. We're glad to address it to your satisfaction.
I would be satisfied with your recommendation.
That's what I.
And I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
So do we need to do a motion to amend? So, Mr. Thurston, do you want to make that motion? Say that again?
Yeah, the motion would just be to accept the amendment to the commitments as presented by Mr. Dobishewitz.
137.
Someone just wants to say, so moved.
So moved.
Did you hear that, Madam Clerk? I said the motion, and Todd said so moved. I just want to make sure you're okay with it. Are you okay with that language?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to adopt the language that has been presented by Mr. Dobishewitz. So this is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand to accept those commitments. Eight-zero. Thank you very much.
Madam President?
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
I move to approve ordinances number 36-10-25 and number 37-10-25 as presented.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinances number 36-10-25 and ordinance 37-10-25 as amended. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Thurston?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Elliott?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Watts?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nay. The ordinances are approved.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to miscellaneous item number one. Council to consider resolution RC-36-25, a resolution establishing the maximum certified civil city property tax rate for 2026. Mr. Spalding?
Yes, Madam President, members of the council, Jeff Spalding, CFO and Controller. And this is the follow-up item that I referenced when I was up here earlier, and this is consistent with the way we've handled this issue in the past. So as I referenced in the official budget ordinance, there is a official tax rate that is officially adopted and communicated to the State Department of Local Government Finance as the maximum tax rate that we can legally have under state law for 2026. This resolution is an additional constraint that you're placing on me that at the end of this year and into January, there's a process where you finalize and you certify your budget and you certify your levies and your tax rates. And what this resolution does is it says that at that point in time, then I cannot certify a rate with the state that is over a dollar per $100 of assessed value as opposed to the $113. And as I communicated to you earlier, my expectation is that that tax rate will actually end up being 97 cents based on the preliminary calculations that I have done. And the only reason for the added little bit of room within there is that, again, it does protect the city in case there are some external changes. An example this year was that the certified net assessed values have already been recertified once this year, going through the process. So if there were to be some other movement, I don't expect there to be, but if there were to be some other movement in that that might cause the tax rate to move a penny or two, you'd have the ability to adjust the tax rate accordingly to adjust for another certification of the assessed values or some other change that might come from the county. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
What this is saying is we're not going to go above a dollar.
Correct.
Period.
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Madam President?
Mr. Davis?
I move to approve resolution RC-36-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC-36-25 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight-zero. Thank you very much. Next item, Ms. Council to consider the 2026 meeting schedule. Ms. Lee's.
Good evening again. Before you is the proposed meeting schedule for next year. We do it a little early so that planning can set their schedules for their different filing dates.
Any questions or comments about the proposed meeting dates for 2026?
Madam President, I would move that we approve miscellaneous number two.
Second.
The 2026 regular meeting.
26 regular meeting schedule.
It's been moved and seconded. So all those in favor of approving the 2026 regular meeting schedule, this is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight-zero. All right. We are now to council comments.
Just wanted to comment, the council every year, started by Allen Hines a few years ago, has a stake in the ground winner. It's the city director position or above that goes above and beyond their duties and really puts a stake in the ground, a tent stake in the ground. And this year's winner, as voted by by the council, was Chief Mann. We had to give a little early this year, but he only gave 75% to the city this year, but he still won. And also did a great job, and we're going to miss him, but we're in great hands. Would also want to congratulate new chief Brad Arnold and Eric Cunningham and Corey Everhart on their promotions, and we feel safe. Thank you.
Anyone else? I will share that I was happy to represent the City of Noblesville at the Associated Builders and Contractors of Indiana, Kentucky Awards Center, where the City of Noblesville was recognized along with Gaylord Electric for excellence for the Noblesville Event Center. So we have received this award, and so I will be happy to present it to the mayor so he can proudly display it. Excited for the recognition of that amazing facility that, as we heard from Mr. Schwartz, is already getting very booked up. So exciting times for sure. Anything else?
Madam President, I will add, I was out there today and purchased two half-season tickets for Boom Games this year, so they're open for business.
As did I. Which half-season are you doing?
Blue.
Blue.
Because it got opening night.
That's right. So there will be lots of people there for Boom Games. Yes, Mr. Go ahead, Mr..
If you haven't looked into it, the one thing I was going to say is that almost 50% of the tickets for those games are under 25 bucks. So it is going to be very affordable for folks to take their family, I mean, they start at $10, to go out there and have a great time and see a great product right here in Noblesville.
Unless you have a large family, and then that requires multiple extra seats.
They all want to go, and they're all excited, so.
Well, there are no nosebleed seats.
Hot dogs, mac and cheese and hot dogs for the next couple of months.
You're right there.
We'll be at the ballgames.
Thank you for supporting me, dear.
Yes, absolutely.
Madam President, I'd just add on to that really quickly, too. I've gotten a lot of questions about merchandise for the Noblesville boom. I will let you know that it is available in the Pacers Team Store downtown Indianapolis as we speak. I just got a picture of it displayed for L Raines today. It'll be online within the next week, available for purchase.